Can I call a meeting to order, please? Start out with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Going to open up with a public hearing. Our clerk's roll call, I guess, first, yeah?
Mayor O'Connor.
Here.
District One Morissette.
Here.
District Three McCormick.
Here.
District Four Weber.
Here.
District Five Hoggins.
Here.
District Six Hall.
Here.
And District Two Olmsted is excused.
Public hearing on the request by John and Breann Cook for property at 916 12th Street and William and Sally Friedlander for property at 1012th Street to amend the City of Hudson zoning map to change the zoning district classification from R1, one-family residential district, to PUB, public or quasi-public district, and to amend the 2009 City of Hudson Comprehensive Plan land use designation from single and two-family residential to institutional for an area generally located east of 12th Street and south of Oak Street, abutting along the west property line of the Hudson Senior School complex. Do you have any comment? This is your chance. Please give your name and address, please.
Dan Marchand. I live on 918 11th Street. We're neighbors of Bill and Sally and obviously neighbors of the high school. And so we're just asking questions about the rezoning as a institutional rezoning. We're certainly aware that the high school is being changed dramatically. Our big concern is really, you know, what's going to happen to the traffic patterns in terms of the campus access. Some of the renditions in the voter pamphlet indicated that there would be a substantial amount of parking on the backside of the high school. And so the concern, again, is kind of obvious. That could really substantially change how the residential neighborhood feels. We reside on Fillmore at Hill and it doesn't take long, under the winter conditions, to see what a trudges road that can be. So again, it's kind of an interest or curiosity as to what the ramifications of the rezoning would have on that residential area.
Okay. Thank you.
Nico Letts, Superintendent Schools, Hudson School District, representing the Hudson School District tonight. I just want to first thank the council for giving us an opportunity to have a public hearing on the property. Also, I know there's a lot of questions or conversations about what this property is going to be used for, should the district acquire it, and, you know, a big piece of what I can say is it's about additional green space on the property and more flexibility on the property. We don't have any set in stone designs for that piece of property yet because, one, we don't own it, and, two, it hasn't been rezoned that we can use it. And so, but we would anticipate additional green space for our property and just expanding that footprint, giving us a little bit more room to spread out. I would welcome any questions either at this point, or maybe this isn't a good time, or when the council takes action, we can try to answer questions at that time as well. So, just want to make sure that people know that there is no concrete plans for that. As far as parking goes, we're going to, what I need to remind people about the pre-referendum drawings is they were just that, they were conceptual and pre-referendum. We haven't even, we haven't locked into a site plan yet just because we just actually got our civil engineer on board on, I think, Friday. So, a lot of things can change and twist and turn as we try to work that site to make it be the best we can for the school district, but also make sure that we're being good neighbors as well. We will be having multiple neighborhood meetings where people will be able to come in and talk to the architects and talk to the district about plans and intentions because, in the end, we really want to make sure that we're good neighbors in this project and that we're helping things and not making things worse. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other comments? Any other comments? Any other comments? Okay. We will close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Okay.
I'll second.
Got a motion, a second to close the public hearing. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Thank you. Next, we have a swearing in of a new police officer. Chief?
Chief, sir. Jeff Yerney and Kurt DeBroy come forward. Kurt's mom is going to come up and pin his badge on him, okay?
I have it around. Get your way over here. You're standing there. Step on. And they're saying, "I'm sure I know he's younger than my son." Here you go.
Raise your hand, please. I, Kurt DeBroy.
I, Kurt DeBroy.
Having been appointed as police officer.
Having been appointed as police officer.
For the City of Hudson Police Department.
For the City of Hudson Police Department.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially.
And will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of said office.
Discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Kurt comes from Brilliant, Wisconsin, which is way over on the east end of the state. He previously worked for Arcadia PD and Lake Hallie PD where LeAnn has just warned him in at least twice that I'm aware of. So, we're glad to have him here. He started last week, so we're excited to get him on board. And his mom brought a bunch of treats, got cookies, we've got Rice Krispie bars, they're all in the back, and she loves to bake, so she wants you to have some. So please enjoy some after the meeting or as soon as you can. Congratulations again.
Excellent. Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, ask them. Buy it. It's cool.
Next, we have the public comment period. Anybody like to make any comments? State your name and address, please.
Mary Ann Weber, 604 Grandview Drive. The usual comment that I would like for the Vine Street improvement to include bike lanes and the extension between Second and Third Street to make that road safer for people passing down the road. Also, when it comes to the parking plan for the city, there are a lot of ideas out there about how that should happen. I'm sure that the engineers and the selection of engineers was excellent, but I really want to encourage that everyone be taking into consideration when it comes to parking, the pedestrians, the people using the sidewalks, possible bicyclers, and all those kinds of people.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Public comments? Anyone else? Both public comment? All right. Next up is consent agenda.
All right. To approve the regular session meeting minutes of June 6, 2016, to approve claims for payment in the amount of $569,303.56, a detailed description is available in the clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website. Contingent on payment of any outstanding debt owed to the city and successful completion of the background check, approve the issuance of 27 regular operators licenses for the period June 21, 2016 to June 30, 2018 to Amanda Steiner, Zarek Kubish, Krista Mathis, Anke Veer, Andrew Whitehead, Lisa Zeller, Brandon Clark, Joshua Hibbard, Thomas Wall, Daniel McCarny, Victoria Marchetti, Michael Kaler, Robin Hubrick, Mark Lomner, Sarah Reilly, Michael Shidi, Timothy Warnkin, Olivia Paulson, Zachary Cook, Benjamin Perkel, Brandon Ramus, Madison Davis, Nicole Domke, David Hall, Leah Gradsky, Michael Punzenberger, Matthew Millman, and eight temporary operators licenses to Michael Beebault, Holly Schultz, Scott Cameron, Jerry McKenzie, Angela Brown, Pedro Renta, Ryan Welch, and Tracy Jenkinson. To approve the 11th Annual Regnar Relay Foot Race, Friday, August 12, 2016 through Saturday, August 13, 2016 event. To approve the Relay for Life for Hudson event at Lakefront Park on June 20, 2016. To approve the Britfest Car Show on Saturday, August 13, 2016. To approve the issuance of two taxi driver's license for the period of July 1, 2016 to June 30, 2017 to Robert Mbea and Elijah Amwenel. Contingent upon payment of any outstanding debt owed to the city. To approve the taxi cab license for Magenna SMV Transport and Taxi LLC, doing business as Magenna Taxi Cab, for the three vehicles listed on their application, contingent on the receipt of the required certificate of insurance and payment of any outstanding debt owed to the city. To approve the bond amounts for ordinance 175-5 Supremum, abandoned fridge freezer to 15550, ordinance 99-21C, no chicken license to 9250. To approve the EMS Commission meeting minutes from June 7, 2016, and to approve the Utility Commission meeting minutes from June 14, 2016.
Move for approval. Second.
Got a motion, a second to approve consent agenda discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Roll call.
Oh, roll call, I'm sorry, that's right.
Morissette?
Yes.
Hoggins?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
And Hall?
Yes.
Excellent. Motion's approved. Next item is from the Plan Commission, ordinance 18-16, rezoning, rezone, zoning map amendment properties at 916 12th Street, Cook and 1012th Street Friedlander, from R1, one-family residential district to PUB, public or quasi-public district, and amend the 2009 City of Hudson Comprehensive Plan land use designation from single and two-family residential to institutional.
Good evening, again. Plan Commission recommends approval of the rezoning request by the Cooks and Friedlanders from R1, one-family residential to PUB, public, quasi-public district, and also amend the comprehensive plan from one and two-family residential to institutional. The purpose of the rezoning is to assist in adding additional land to the high school facility. This property is located at the northwest area of the high school site, just east of 11th Street and south of Oak Street. To approve a ordinance for rezoning, it takes four out of six votes of the common council. Again, ordinance 18-16 is the ordinance which considers the zoning map amendment or rezoning and the comprehensive plan amendment.
I'll move with suspend the rules. Second?
Motion, a second to suspend the rules. Discussion? Roll call?
Morissette?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
And Hoggins?
Yes.
Move we adopt ordinance 18-16.
I'll second.
Got a motion, a second for approval. Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Thanks, Denny. Item B, under eight, final development plans, Holiday Inn Express.
I just make a comment in regards to what a public comment was made during the public hearing.
Sure.
In regards to the high school project, city staff has met once with the high school representatives, that was back in December of 2015. At that time, we strongly suggested that a traffic analysis will be required by the City of Hudson due to changes in parking, traffic patterns, and so forth. I just want to make that comment. So, it's understood that the traffic issue will be strongly looked at, and their issue that will be strongly looked at is stormwater management, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Item B, final development plans, Holiday Inn Express and Suites, 100 unit hotel, 181 Carmichael Road and Banquet Hospitality Center, 2001 Carmichael Road, HLR Hospitality LLC, Doug Rhodey.
Okay. Two weeks ago, there was a not-so-brief discussion on this issue in regards to Holiday Inn. The point of contention at that discussion was the access to the south property line of this, where that should be approved by the City of Hudson. Again, city staff has been opposed to that, and the reason why we'll more clearly explain in a minute. There was a handout that was presented to you, which is an outline of issues for the potential intersection at Carmichael Road and the road that will be constructed between the Holiday Inn Express and Culvers. Again, city staff recommends not to allow the access. Mr. Glenn Van Warmer's here tonight to go over the issue. Part of the consideration is the future configuration and capacity of the intersection at Carmichael Road in this proposed street. And kind of wild card in the whole consideration is the amount of development that may occur on the east side of Carmichael Road, which could potentially add considerable amount of traffic into that intersection in the future. There was some discussion in whether two left turns from the, you know, from the concept plan was going to be necessary. It's not so much the concept that city and state agree to, but the possibility of this higher traffic volume coming from any development occurs on the east side. So at this time, I'd like to relinquish the floor to Mr. Glenn Van Warmer. He'll go over basically what Glenn's intent today is, to explain to you the traffic and concerns of what the city staff is looking at for that intersection, and then we can go from there with the discussion. Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening. I know you have a lot on your agenda, so I'll try to be brief, but I also want to be complete so that you have all the information you need in order to make your decision. I gave you a handout sheet, I can follow along, you can make notes on it. First, I want to talk a little bit about the intersection itself, Carmichael and Street A, as we call it now. The volume on Carmichael Road right now is about 15,000 vehicles a day. In 2014, when the Department of Transportation did the study of the interchange and of Carmichael Road, they used a volume of 15,500. They did a forecast on how the volume would increase over the next 20 years, and that would give you a volume of 23,600 cars. That's about a 40-some percent increase. And if you look at all the vacant land up in the northern part of the city, by the court, by the county building, et cetera, you can see that you can develop quite a bit of traffic yet. One of the things to kind of give you a perception of what you're dealing with with Carmichael Ridge is that development alone, with all the commercial and all the residential, will generate about 18,000 trips. In other words, it'll generate more trips than is now on Carmichael Road. So it's, we have to treat the intersection and the roads around it with a fair amount of concern. There was an intersection analysis that was completed back in April of 2015. It was done, I'm not sure whose request, but it was part of the development plan at the time. What they did in that is they assumed an intersection greater than what is there today. They had two through lanes, a right turn and a left turn lane on Carmichael Road, which is pretty much a standard intersection along there. And then they had a left, a right, and a single eastbound turn coming out, or eastbound through movement coming out of the Carmichael Ridge's development. But westbound, they used the DOT concept of having a right turn lane, a through lane, and two left turn lanes to take care of what the anticipated development on the east side.
So can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Did, when the traffic study that was the forecast by the DOT was done, were they thinking, or was the basis that it was going to be a golf course and not a development?
I believe that they thought at that time it was a development, but I can't, I can't definitely say they did.
That's a good question.
But it was pretty much known at that time that that golf course wasn't going to stay there forever. The concept that they had for the intersection also had left turn arrows on all four directions. It'd be similar to what you have on most of the other intersections along Carmichael. And then, at the end, it said the analysis showed that the level of service was C, which is good. A is an unbelievably well-operating intersection, C works well, D starts to get congested, E is congestion, you don't want an E, and F is total failure. But when we looked into more detail of the analysis, we found that only two of the four approaches were a level of service C, two others were a level of service D, meaning it was not operating as well as the numbers would show. And seven of the 12 approaches, if you look at the left and right and through movements on each of the four approaches, seven of those 12 were level of service D. So it isn't a C operation all the way around. As we got into the analysis, we also found a few concerns. The volumes on the east side were relatively low. If you look at your comprehensive plan, you have more land set for commercial development than you do on the west side. And yet, they only had 198 vehicles coming out of there in the peak hour, whereas you have 450 coming out of Carmichael Ridge's. So we assume that there's going to be a significantly higher volume of traffic coming west out of the east side of the area over there on Carmichael Road. That's that area that I think has been talked about for Walmart or for some other development over the past several years. So that means that you're going to have more traffic there than you anticipated. Now, you have, on the east side, you have a planned commercial development, I believe it is, a PCD, which means you can somewhat regulate the volume of traffic coming out of the development by being careful about what you allow in there. So we can decrease the volume a little bit on the west side, but the east side is going to be much higher than is in this analysis. So that's, I think, a pretty good concern for you to be aware of. So you could have, instead of that 198, you could have probably 400 or even 500 vehicles in a peak hour. There's three specific movements that are of a concern to us. One is the northbound left turn. There's about a 300-foot-long queue of traffic in the peak hour waiting to make the left turn. That's, you know, a substantial volume, a substantial distance for the backup. And a turn lane is only 300 feet. Well, seven more feet isn't going to make a big difference, but it's the amount of time it's going to take to clear out that lane. Now, when that's green and all the people are making a northbound left turn, the rest of the traffic is basically sitting still except for the southbound left turn or the northbound through. The other one is even more of a concern, and that's the eastbound left turn coming out of the Carmichael Ridge's development going north. That had a peak hour backup of about 200 and some feet, but it's only 160 feet, 180 feet back to the roundabout, meaning that at times, that traffic from the left turn is going to back up into the exit from the roundabout. And once that roundabout exit is blocked, the roundabout is going to just basically stop. It's going to break down. And so we have a little bit of a concern about that movement. There's also, in their analysis, with this low volume of traffic coming out of the east, there was a level of service D for all the movements, and there were only 198 westbound left turns. We get 400, you can see that there's a bigger concern. So rather than just say, gee, we got a problem, we looked at some potential solutions. One of them would be to provide a dual northbound left turn lane. That would do two things. One, it would take care of that long queue of traffic that we're worried about. And two, it would reduce the amount of time that it takes to make that left turn movement. In other words, it would give us more green time for other movements in the intersection. So if you needed more green time to get traffic out of the east coming from the development on the east side, you could, you could get that by reducing the time that you would have for the northbound left turn. The same way with the eastbound left turn. You could put a dual left turn in there, and you already would have, based on the development concept, two lanes going northbound. So it would be an easy fix to get that backup out of the roundabout. And so, we also could do other things like right turn overlaps and so on, but we can build more capacity into that intersection by adding a couple of lanes. But there are some concerns, and that's what gets us to some of tonight's discussions. One is that the northbound left turn, if you're going to put dual left turn lanes in, you're going to have to have two lanes to accept it. And it's like down on Crestview, on Carmichael, as you go to Crestview, you've got a northbound double left turn, and then as you go west on Crestview, you have two lanes of traffic. So it's unnatural to provide those two lanes of turning. The good thing on Crestview is you've got two lanes that continue all the way west for a couple miles, whereas here, we're going to have to put them back into a single lane to get into the roundabout. We, there are dual lane roundabouts, but at this particular intersection, I don't think a dual lane roundabout would be an acceptable design because you're going to have a lot of traffic trying to get in and make the turn all the way around to go into the commercial development. That's, that would require basically a left turn.
I've seen dual lane roundabouts. I've seen dual lane roundabouts that are in way busier areas than this.
There are, and some of them work well and some of them don't work well. Washington County has removed two of their dual lane roundabouts because of some of the problems they have in trying to get the traffic around in two lanes and then back to the left.
Yeah, it was just on the east side of Mankato, and they have huge shopping areas, and it's all roundabouts in there.
There are a lot of, there are a lot of dual lane roundabouts. They have them out on highways, Highway 8 up in St. Croix Falls, or in other locations, too. The problem with a roundabout is you have to fit it into the location with the number of lanes. And our concern here is that it wouldn't be good to continue the two lanes all the way around. It's something you could study in a little more detail, but the first thing is, it probably wouldn't work. But the big thing is you'd need the two lanes westbound. The other thing is to, the other concern is that if you put in two lanes eastbound for the left turn to go north, then you have to add a couple more, you have to add at least one more lane into that Street A between the roundabout and Carmichael Road. So, we had suggested, and I think Denny can tell me if you've done it, but I think we requested the developer to provide an ultimate design, which would have those two extra lanes in it. That would give you some flexibility in the future, but it would also resolve a couple of specific problems that we see with the existing proposal. Some of the concerns also are that the westbound lanes are going to have to merge rather quickly to get back into a single lane unless we can somehow figure out how to make the roundabout double lane. The eastbound, well, the additional lanes are also going to require that ultimate section, and that section is going to be a little bit wider than what is currently proposed, which means we're going to use up the entire right of way that we have. It's taking about 100 to 104 feet of width to do that. The, it gets us to the main concern this evening, and that's that Holiday Inn entrance. The Holiday Inn entrance is right in those two lanes, and I think the easiest way to explain it is to put yourself into the driver's seat of one of those turns. If you're traveling northbound and you're in the outside lane, the one away from the median, and make that left turn, you have 160 feet then to merge with the traffic in the left lane. So you're, first off, you have to, as you drive around, and if you've driven in the outside lane of a left turn, you know you have to be very careful in selecting your path. You want to make sure that you end up in the right spot on the, on the street going away. Then if you have to merge, you're going to be looking mostly to your left, and when we introduce a right turn on the right side, or a deceleration or something, you can see that that's kind of unexpected, and you're asking the driver to look left to merge, look ahead to find your route, and look to the right to see if there's somebody slowing down in front of you. So that's, that's one of the concerns there.
Why can't you prevent a right turn if there's a left, left turners? Why can't you prevent that?
I'm sorry, I'm...
Well, you said that the right, people turning right would interfere with people turning left that are going north into the...
Well, the people that are turning right are the ones that have already gone around the intersection and are now going to make the right turn into the Holiday Inn.
I got you. I got you. Okay.
So what you're doing is you're following a car, and he's accelerating, and you're accelerating, and you look left, and the car ahead is decelerating to make that turn, and it would set you up for an incident.
Yep.
We had, if you go on Highway 36 in Oak Park Heights and you turn and, like at Washington, you make a left turn, and right of way, you can turn to go to Menards or VFW. I know you wouldn't go there from here, you've got your own, but if you made that turn, it's kind of suddenly to have that car in front of you slow down as you're accelerating, and that's what we're concerned about here. Secondly, if you're driving on the inside lane, and you're going to some Holiday Inn or the event center for the first time, or even as an regular one, you come around and you're in the inside lane, and suddenly you want to make a right turn into the entrance. Well, if there's cars behind you, they're not in a good spot for you to see in the mirror, and even your little beeper on the mirror is not going to be able to tell you that there's a car there before you run into them. So we have that concern. So you can see, we're a little bit concerned about the fact that we have two drivers turning around, and suddenly they have some options to make a right turn into that development. The other, the third thing is that you have an event center there, and that access is probably going to be through the Holiday Inn parking lot, because they'll see the Holiday Inn, they'll see the event center, they'll want to make that turn, too. But there's going to be a little confusion, because it'll be Holiday Inn, and you don't want that confusion right in the middle of two lanes of left turning. So that's the reason why we've been opposed to allowing that entrance there. We understand that there are problems with access to Holiday Inn, but you have to be very careful about just saying, well, we'll have an entrance and deal with the problems if they surface. We think that the problems will be there. So that's, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them, otherwise you can go on with Denny's presentation or discussion.
Questions?
Yeah, what's the solution?
Well, one solution would be, and it's not unusual for a hotel not to have direct access. I've traveled a lot, and I've had to drive around the back to get into them in a number of locations. You'll find them where they'll be sitting right on an entrance ramp, and you'll have to make two right turns to get to them. I mean, exit ramp, and you'll make two left turns to get around the street to get into them. So we can find a number of examples of those. This has an added problem of the elevation, so that you have to come around and sneak back around, but the normal tendency of a driver, going back to driver behavior, is if you get lost, you turn right. If you can't find something, you make a right turn and start looking that way for it. You can visualize yourself when you're into a strange place. And so it's a natural, just go right until I can find the entrance I want.
Is there anything that actually prevents us from using the northern entrance of the property, on the north edge of the property?
Or is make a left turn up there?
It's a right turn only.
I haven't looked at that, because we're primarily looking at this particular intersection. I don't know what the distance would be or the volume that would occur there, but in the future, you'd probably have to build a left turn lane.
Sure.
And stuff like that. And if you get a big development on the east side, the length of the southbound left turn at the Street A to go over to the east side is going to dictate how much room you got left for the northbound left turn into the event center.
I think Carmichael's going to have to be totally rebuilt all the way up to Vine Street at some point in time.
At some point, it will.
Not, I don't even know if you have a plan for it, but it's not going to be adequate for, it's not, it's barely adequate now, and it's not going to be adequate for any growth.
No, and I think it'll come quicker than a lot of people think, because as you watch traffic now, as it comes out of the two lanes and gets back into one right in front of Culvers, it's a little tight. It's interesting to watch it in rush hour.
I know, it's been mentioned that there's some concern, you know, because there's a hill coming from the north, people cars coming over a hill, but I drive that about four times a day, and I just keep watching, and I've been looking, how serious is that? And I can see the car coming at me a long way before he ever crests the hill, and he can see me as well. And so it's, I think it's, it bears looking at to see what sort of an issue do we have there, and when we rebuild Carmichael, knock that hill down. So it's, you know, but it's, it might be the best solution right now. I appreciate what you're saying about getting into hotels, and I've done my share of right turns looking for hotel entrances. And I don't appreciate it. The easier, the better we can make, particularly for the, and I think when we talk about the event center, we really would be, in my mind, the Holiday Inn would want to separate the event center traffic from the hotel traffic. That would, if I was a customer buyer, that's what I would want.
Well, we anticipate that when you come into Holiday Inn, you're going to have to make a left turn, pretty hard left turn, to get around into that little entrance driver, else drive in clockwise. So there's going to be a little bit of congestion in front there as people drive in, drive around, drive back out, and try to find parking.
So you had talked about potentially the two lanes, two left turn lanes coming in there, and we've heard that that was a proposal that was discussed by the council a while back and rejected, but you're thinking it's likely that that would be necessary?
The two northbound left turns?
Right. That's what you said.
I didn't know it had been rejected, or...
No, I agree. There's never a proposal necessarily. The concept that came out as a single left turn, we're just saying that there may be warrant due to traffic in the future that would require two left turns. And the reason that Glenn was trying to explain is signalization, trying to get cars moved through that intersection, so you get that turnover of traffic.
So he was, it seemed to me that Glenn was indicating that that would be probably necessary sooner rather than later.
It's all going to depend on when that east side of Carmichael Road develops.
Isn't that, but isn't that also dependent upon when Carmichael's going to be done? And weren't we talking 2025?
No, I think, I think if there's annexation of property on the east side of Carmichael Road, and the traffic warrants that signalized intersection, that's going to occur before the exit two reconstruction occurs.
Okay, so one of the things, Glenn, that you had said bothered me a little bit. You talked about the introduction of a right turn lane into the property there. I mean, introduction of an entrance there, it exists, it is there. What's happened was the introduction of a throughway to get into the new development. And what that has now done to this property, and it would seem to me that somebody should have said, we've got a piece of commercial property here that's, you know, idle right now, but people are going to want to use this at some point in time, and apparently they neglected, completely neglected in the planning process, how people are going to be able to access that piece of property. And if this, I have no idea, we haven't heard from the developer yet, but my concern is that if this is a deal breaker, I don't know who we're going to get to buy that property, because they're going to need access, and they're going to want frontage access, and I don't want another boondoggle like we have with the dog track, where we have a vacant piece of property, because people can't get in there. And then we're talking now about the introduction of potentially developing the property on the other side of Carmichael. Has anybody thought about how you're going to get people in and out of that corner? Because to me, I mean, with everything you've said here tonight, that would make no sense whatsoever to allow any development that we would be part of, party to, based upon what you're talking about as far as the traffic flow there. And that, again, that's hypothetical. We've got somebody, we have a developer here right now that wants to develop this property. The other side is just purely hypothetical.
Well, there was a very, pretty sophisticated traffic analysis when the Walmart was proposed as far as what that configuration of that east side, as far as the traffic access would be, so that was looked at very carefully.
So left-hand turns coming from the north, left-hand turns into that parking lot?
There was a single, single left turn at that time.
Okay.
The, part of the council consideration last time was to delay action on this until today. Staff did meet with the developers last week, so one of the things that was proposed was a right turn lane into the site with some combinations of internal traffic control in the parking lot on the east side of the Holiday Inn parking area, and we've taken a look at that. If you want to, we certainly can concede the floor to the developers for them to explain what they proposed.
Okay.
Yeah, let's definitely hear. I'd like to. Thank you, guys.
So we did meet, as Danny said, with staff last week, and they did voice their concerns. I'll just address this, but I do have some other comments about the proposed, or the traffic study that was just prepared. But based on, can I take this out? I think I can. Oh, thanks, sorry. Based on some of their concerns about this, so here's Carmichael here, here's the existing clubhouse, and the concern is that, or was, that this wouldn't be a free-flow in, that if there was traffic trying to get across, you know, and there was some confusion within the parking lot, that people might pause, stop. So what we've done is, first of all, we've provided potentially a right turn lane so that people can get off and start decelerating. And then also, we've blocked off, so this would just be an internal, you know, circulation, but you wouldn't have a car waiting here or here, well, you would have one here, but you wouldn't have one here, and this one can't get straight across. So you wouldn't have that conflicting movement within the parking lot. We would have a curb area there, so that it would be a free-flow right turn lane in, basically to the front door, so that people wouldn't get confused and have to pause, so there was any kind of backup onto Street A. So that was some of the proposals that we made to help alleviate any concerns they had about that people would stop and have to think while they're out in Street A. I do still have concerns about the dual left turns. I mean, I'm just looking at this memo that was just handed to me right now as far as the projected traffic flows, and forecast for 2035 is 23,600 vehicles, and we're saying 18,000 are going to turn into this property alone. That's 77% of the movements all coming into the site, which, when I do the numbers, I'm thinking there's 135 homes being built, and there's two other ways they can get in and out. There's this property, there's potentially a, maybe a multi-development, only six acres, so you could put maybe one building there, and then we have 20 acres of commercial, which to, as a comparison, Family Fresh and Target combined are 20 acres. And not that we would have, I mean, there's no proposal up in that area, but from a commercial standpoint, you really don't have a significant amount of commercial. So I'm thinking the amount of traffic proposed coming into this site, and knowing that there's three other proposed entrances into this whole area, that that traffic will be split out a little more than is presented. So I do have concerns about that, and then also, from a left turn lane, there was comments about the 300, you know, the turn lane's 300 feet, and they have 307 feet. One car is 25 feet, so you only have like a little bit of a car sticking out. So to add a full, another left turn lane to get into the development because of seven feet, I still am questioning that that might be a lot of traffic that's coming into this development that's, I don't, I don't see that will happen. There's 350 feet actually from the turn, the drivable lane on Carmichael to the roundabout area is 350, so it's 150 and then 200 feet. And what we're seeing is, even if those 300 feet of cars on here, if they're turning in, they're all then having to queue at the roundabout. So when we know that there's traffic that wants to get in here, they can then make this turn right into the development and actually alleviate some of that queuing at the roundabout. So that's just another consideration on that. And we did have, we've had two traffic engineers. There was a traffic engineer that, the SPAC report from a few years ago that did analysis of the whole development, and then we had our traffic engineer from Ayers and Associates did the study, and both of them, you know, looked at this, and I think SPAC's total vehicles in at 2030 was under 12,000. So that's where I'm just questioning, or what we're looking at is, we actually believe it'll help. Again, I think if we have all the vehicles coming to one entrance here, and then having to get around to the front parking lot, which is where the banquet center and the front entrance, you're just going to have a lot of internal movement that can be alleviated by providing the right turn. And it's a right turn in only, so there's not going to be the exiting vehicles, it's just getting people in, and we fill with the internal modifications, they'll get them in quick and get them to their destination where they want to go.
With a dedicated right turn lane only on that now?
Yes, we can add, so we've put in there, we can fit in a right turn lane if we would, if that's a consideration, and we would make the internal modifications so that people can free-flow in there.
If for some reason we decide you can't use that access, what is your, what's your Plan B?
Well, hopefully, in the future, whether this is a consideration or as Gagnon property just to the north, as that develops, we will have more options of getting in potentially to what's going to be kind of a rear frontage road, for lack of better words. So there might be some more opportunities, but I still think it's, you know, we might be able to, right now, this property is available. Maybe there's a chance of getting cars in at some intersection so they can come through the front of that area, but...
If we were to, if you were to take that right turn in, right turn out, out, and make that at least left turn in...
Full.
I mean, because a lot of people go to the banquet center, might not even stay at the hotel, right?
That's correct.
So you have to consider that traffic.
And so, but that's where...
Did you guys talk about that in plan commission at all?
We touched on it, we didn't get in depth with it.
And I know, yeah.
Access at the northeast corner, right in, right out only. That was due to a vision issue at the time the clubhouse was developed. Again, their issue is, we currently have a policy on Carmichael Road, as Carmichael Road's structured development occurs, we want to have access set at a fairly even distance, about every 1,300 feet, which is a little less than a quarter mile. And that, what that does, then you have a set of frontage roads, so every development have a driveway, and you've got cars coming in and out, similar to Crestview Drive, we've got a more managed traffic consideration, and that accesses will be limited to Carmichael Road to every quarter mile. But from basically Cooley Road up to this, this one, this access would be the first quarter mile, and you'd have another quarter mile you'd have an access, then you'd have Vine Street. And we're not able to make an exception, or we won't, or I guess, the way I see it is if we're going to, if we were to eliminate that southern access, you've got to come all the way around the building, and then if you're not going to the hotel, you have to go all the way up and around back just to get to the banquet center. I realize there's some parking down there, but the bulk of that, so if I was coming north in there, the only way I can possibly do that is to go up and whip a Uwe at the church, like the faith church, come back down, or I got to go, I get to do this huge parking maze through the property. So, I mean, it seems like something has to give here. I appreciate where that is, but at some point, wouldn't it be possible to make that work on the northeast corner, that entrance? I mean, it seems like we're kind of limited on options here.
Well, if you want us to review it, we can review it, but that's, it hasn't been a big issue until now, so...
Danny, what was your takeaway from the meeting you had with everybody, what was that, today?
No, we had a meeting a week ago Thursday, Wednesday, excuse me, Wednesday. Discussions, you know, we agreed, you know, if you want to propose the right turn in, propose the limitations of the extended median, which eliminates one maneuver within the parking lot, we're willing to take a look at that. And we did take a look at it, we even, we took a very serious look at it today in regards to maybe some additional things that might mitigate if a driveway goes on the south side. But regardless, what Glenn felt very strongly about is, is you're going to have fairly high traffic volumes, there is the potential in the future, as development occurs up there, that this... There is the potential in the future, as development occurs up there, that this access becomes an issue.
Are we basing this decision on the fact that we have a single lane roundabout or a potential two lane roundabout? Right now, we're saying no to the two lane roundabout. It's not even in there yet, so why wouldn't we kind of plan that we would expect to have a two lane roundabout there? And I get it, you've got to funnel them down to one to get back into residential area. But how long, since where does, where's the road going to go to the commercial development on that?
A single lane roundabout handles a lot of capacity. You can get nearly, you know, 14,000, 15,000 cars a day of a single, single lane roundabout. I mean, you go down to Hallard Road, you know, the DLT, if they had to do that project over, they would have never built a dual lane roundabout, because the traffic doesn't warrant. I've talked, I've had that discussion with the DLT. They built it that way because of what the future development might be. So what we're trying to do right now is build a reasonable under the current, but I really question where a dual, two lane roundabout's going to be necessary there, because that single lane roundabout's going to handle a lot of capacity. You look at the traffic that goes through the hospital roundabout, there's a lot of traffic that goes through that in a day.
So the staff is still in the position where you recommend not to?
Well, we're strongly suggesting that we think it's going to be an issue in the future.
Danny, has there been any consideration of the fact that if something like this were done, that it would probably discourage people that are, from the housing development, from using this?
Well, I mean...
I mean, if I lived, if I moved in there and I lived there and I saw traffic coming in, let's just presume that we gave the entrance there to the hotel. And if it were, if it were a real congestion issue, I think I'd bypass that, I think I'd go to one of the other routes.
They have the option of taking the access at Cooley Road.
Yeah, so, I mean, was there any consideration in the analysis on the traffic flow there that people likely would probably choose a different option?
That's a pretty big assumption whether you're going to do that or not.
I don't know, I mean, if we're talking about congestion, I think that people try to avoid it.
The residential part of the traffic is relatively minor in this whole issue.
Well, we were just here, we just heard about all the, all the number of in and out coming from the development in a day that was projected.
Most of it's from the commercial development. And the biggest issue that's being, our concern is, is the amount of traffic that may ultimately come in if the east side of Carmichael Road's developed.
All right, so what do you think of this proposal?
Well, it's, you know, city staff's recommending not have the access there. The common council wants to have an access there. We are ready to prepare or comment on mitigation factors that should be built into it.
The, and aside, you had talked about the traffic analysis for Walmart and for commercial on the other side. Was that before or after the housing development?
Oh, it was before.
It was definitely before. When I was mentioning the dual lane roundabout, I meant at the Carmichael Road intersection, not, not this other roundabout. A dual lane on Carmichael is what I was talking about.
Well, I mean, that's, that's a possibility of a...
That would change things, would it not? I mean, quite, you know?
Glenn would have to answer that more so than myself.
It would seem to me if we, when we start talking about expansion on the east side, we have to be thinking about a total reconstruction of Carmichael. Frontage roads down both sides, and then traffic, manageable traffic flow down the center, something like that. Because we can't, 1,300 feet minimum distance between exits is a long way when you're trying to have a commercial property. That's, you have to have frontage roads to me to support that. So I'm not sure. I think we need to look at an interim solution here and say, this isn't the way it's always going to be. You know, that this is what we, we want this, we, I'm assuming, we want this development to come in, we want the Holiday Inn to come in, we want the conference center. And we should look at, what's the compromise position that we can take for the next two to five years? And start working on the Carmichael Corridor. It needs to be, something needs to happen there.
Well, I think we should take a serious look at what they've done on the south side. But Plan B, I think we should seriously look at the northeast corner having left in, so that people can come up there, can just go right in, not only for the hotel, but for the banquet center. And I think, short of that, you've got all these people have to drive all the way through that parking lot just to go to the banquet center. I just, it really kind of wrecks the property, in my opinion.
Glenn, what do you think of this proposal?
One of the things that we're trying to point out is that we need quite a bit of right of way to get those additional lanes in there. And I want to clarify one thing, Angela was talking about the 300 feet. It's not the distance of that last car, it's the fact that you've got 12, 14 cars that you have to get through every time that lane fills up. If we do a dual, we only have to get about seven cars per lane through. And so you're saving time, time is more important than that backup. And, but that goes back to what we need to address here, and that's the number of lanes and the width. And if we provide, there are some drawings that show that. If we try to provide two inbound lanes, westbound, and a dual eastbound left turns, that's going to pretty well fill this up. If you were to put a right turn lane in there, you would probably want to, you would probably have to go outside the existing right of way to do so.
Yeah.
So you'd have to be of concern there. This probably is about the best mission mitigation you could do to having, well, an entrance at that location. We put in a turn lane, the turn lane would pull cars off before they totally stop trying to turn in. It wouldn't get rid of that movement of somebody in the inside or the median lane trying to make the turn over. This mitigates a lot of the internal concerns of traffic blocking or pulling in. If we were here, we'd probably suggest a little different approach here. Again, it's within the design of the roadway, of the parking lot. So it's probably the best mitigation you can have, but you still have a few problems remaining. The big thing that we're trying to point out is that you need to be prepared for the future, because even if you reduce the volume of traffic in here, you're going to have a lot of traffic in the intersection. And you have to be able to melt every minute you can. Anytime that intersection is not having a lot of cars going through, you're just creating more of a problem. You can see that if you look at the Cooley Road intersection, because you've got a split phase where northbound goes or southbound goes, they don't go together, and there are times when there's a car going through and then another car going through, where everybody's sitting around looking at this empty intersection. We can't afford that there with the development on the east side, and even a reduced development on the west side. So I answered more than your question.
No, that was, that was fine. Could, do you think that a workable plan can be arrived at with that right turn lane into the Holiday Inn?
As I mentioned, you still have some concerns for the XL, deceleration of vehicles, and you still have that inbound turn trying to make it into this intersection. Those still exist.
I understand that, but can you make it a workable solution?
I'm not sure that that's an answerable question in a way, because I would not like to see the entrance there. But on the other hand, I understand the concerns that you have and how you are looking for a compromise. It might be, oh, this is, what Angela said, this was between, between about 600, 500 feet? And if you had to have like a 300 foot turn lane here, you could dual the turn lane that way too, and maybe get a sharp turn lane in there. So there'd be something you might be able to do in the future.
But for right now, this is, is this the best alternative that has been presented?
If the council wanted to put an entrance there, you know, if that's your decision, this is about the best you can do to mitigate the concerns that I've tried to express.
We would have some additional mitigation factors we'd like to see implemented if that was a consideration. And I went over that with Mr. Rhodey this afternoon, what those may be, and I also mentioned them to mirror.
Danny, what is your thought about this right turn?
Well, again, it's a mitigating issue. The city position is, we, access shouldn't be there. If access is going to be there, then it needs, mitigating considerations need to be made. The right turn in, the extended aisle, which prohibits the one-turning movement within the parking lot. The additional things that the city staff would suggest is actually moving the parking, the last row parking or the south row parking further north, because there's about a 30-foot driveline in there. That would provide more additional room for the right turn lane. Plus, it gives more room in the, in the future for the lanes that are necessary to make this stretch of roadway more workable in the future from a capacity standpoint. So, and then there's one area issue when you are going in this direction. We would suggest that that lane be reconfigured to force the traffic to turn more in a west or northerly fashion, rather than going straight, because if they go straight and stop, they may still have the inclination to turn right and go in the opposite director, direction of the entrance. So by forcing them to go a little bit more to the left, that would help eliminate that. So those are three additions. And then there's something with the continuation of the curb line from the east side or the right turn lane over to the west side, so there's a little better transition of the roadway at the entrance.
Design details?
Those are pretty, those are very, and we're getting, we're getting nitpicky now, but, but those are things that would make this much better beyond what Dave have proposed.
How did those mitigating suggestions go?
Well, I would say in the interest of time, and we've got a lot of smart people here, and I really think we could, although it's not a perfect solution, I'd like to make a motion to continue to work on the south entrance to everyone's satisfaction.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded that we move forward with the south entrance on the project. Further discussion?
As long as it's contingent on the issues that city staff brings up, as far as pushing that right lane as much as you can, as you could.
Okay.
Providing a, yes.
Okay, was I hearing a concern that we don't have enough right of way to do this, or it's pushing it? My assumption is...
We've picked up, we've picked up some additional right of way, moving this right turn lane further north, particularly west, or, excuse me, to the east of the access. That's where we need, really need the additional right of way, so that will assist. We're very close to having what we need.
Okay, my assumption would be...
There's also some provision as far as the width of the median that separates the westbound traffic on the north and the eastbound traffic on the south, where that can be minimized to allow more space too. So, you know, we've looked at, we're very close to getting where we need to be.
So if they're in this parking lot here on Carmichael, is the only way out through the right turn only to Carmichael?
No, you get to the west.
But how do they get to this?
West access.
Okay, so they can come down here and around, okay.
What they have here, as was pointed out, they have a do not enter sign here, so that you wouldn't want to try and come this way. And I'm assuming that we'd end up with some directional signing to get them to come back out this way. Once you get them in the parking lot, it's not too hard to get them out with some signing in the lot, because they're going slow, they're not under pressure.
Okay, they need a lot of signs, because I look at that, and I just think, if I didn't know this area and was coming from out of town, it would be very confusing.
Well, if they got to this point, a sign here, a sign here, and a sign here, and one here would get them out.
Okay, and then they need more signs in order to...
Well, once they came this way, you're going to have some signing in the intersection that talks about Carmichael.
To go back to Carmichael, okay.
So that's another nice thing about the roundabout, is they get down and they're in it and the signing will get out.
Just for clarification, John, is you're telling them to come back in two weeks with an updated plan? Are you recommending approval of this with, and let them figure it out, just so everybody's on the same page? Are you recommending approval of the final development plans and have them figure it out, or do you want to come back in two weeks?
I'm okay recommending the final plan.
That's what I thought too.
So everybody's on the same page, and you want some...
Right, I think we've, I think, yeah, you're going to be able to figure it out, so, yeah, I'm fine with approval.
All right.
Question, it's been discussed also that this is a temporary solution. And at the last meeting, there was discussion of an agreement at least acknowledging that. And the city's right, if in the future it determines this intersection is not working...
No, I don't think this should be conditional, especially because the city engineer decided, so that's not part of my motion. It's not conditional.
Okay. Further discussion?
Do you think that that's something that's necessary?
I think it would be beneficial, yes, because I've also heard from the engineer, I'm not an engineer, so, that the crossover traffic pattern, that these mitigation measures don't address that, and that still exists. And I've also heard from the community development director that the city staff is, does not support that intersection, but is mitigating measures, will look at these other things. And so I think the consensus that I heard was that it's going to likely need work in the future. And just an acknowledgement of that, I think as a contingency and the developer's acknowledgement that it may be changed and removed if necessary would benefit the city.
Tom, do you want to comment again, Tom Sifco? You said you did not believe conditional was a good idea whatsoever at our last meeting. And I'm not trying to argue, I'm just saying that that's what I heard. So I don't think we want to sit here and make this conditional and have to...
Can I make one more statement? In a perfect world, no. You'd not have the south entrance if that's what your engineers are recommending against. As a fail-safe or backup, I think it would be helpful.
We're spending a lot of time to make this site work for the developer. But if there's something goes wrong, the developer should be the one that bears the burden of that, not the city. So why would we want, not make it conditional? If something arises, why should the city be on the hook for it?
I thought that making conditional, Tom, could you comment again, please? I'd appreciate it.
Well, I just, I do want to comment that the developer is willing to cooperate in some kind of a concession or agreement for a provisional, unless their minds have been changed since this afternoon.
Yeah, I, again, my comment back two weeks ago, I had a, like, real brief with Kathy, but maybe it was more eye contact during the meeting. When I said I didn't recommend that agreement in the future, I was just looking at it from a practical situation. In the future, first of all, we don't know the timing of when that future is. Is it two years, five years, 10 years? There could be obviously new council members, there could be new owners of the property. I'm just thinking if some number of years down the line, if it turns out to be a problem, I'm not sure how you would even enforce or do whatever with this agreement, because I think you're immediately going to be in a litigation, lawyers on one side, lawyers on the other side, no matter what this agreement says today. Now, maybe I shouldn't say that, because again, my background's engineering, it's not law, but I think...
I'm not saying it's a certainty that it would be enforceable. I'm saying it would give the city some basis for requiring the developer to bear those costs, because the city has been willing to consider a southern access that the city has concerns about. And so that it would, it would absolutely be binding on successors and assigns. And it would contain terms whereby there would be no compensation and that the developer would bear the cost of removing the access, because this is an accommodation being provided to the developer to allow an access that the city has concerns about. The concerns are mitigated to some extent, but not completely. Now, granted, there will be other council members here in the future, but they will have a basis, if they so choose, to enforce removing and changing the access at the developer's cost and without compensation and future owners it would be binding on.
I guess my challenge is that, is the developer signing up for that some future council could take away their access at some point in time?
It would be at the city's determination that that... It would be at the city's determination that that access was no longer safe. Remember, this will be a public, public street, which the city is responsible for. So, yeah.
John, I'd like to see it added, otherwise I'd probably withdraw my second.
Fair enough. I will on recommendation of council. Could we hear from the developer, are you okay with this conditional? Mr. Rhodey, I'm sorry.
Yes, as I had stated, I think the last one or two meetings, certainly I think it came up, planning commission meeting as well, I don't see any issue with that. I mean, bottom line is, whether it's there or not, it's a city road. If it becomes a problem, you're going to, you're going to do it, whatever measures are needed to fix it anyway. But obviously, we've, we've been dealing in a great deal of cooperation all the way around. So, yes, within reason, and I think also, we certainly do not, in, and we can certainly work with the city attorney on this and Denny, but as those, as improvements are being made down the road, say that there's an opportunity on the north side and there's a redo on Carmichael, obviously, we don't want a negative to come out of that and not be able to, to make a positive alteration at some future point as well.
Okay, fair enough.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
I've heard you got a motion, Tom, sorry.
It wasn't seconded?
It was.
Yeah, it was.
You withdrew it, I thought.
No, no.
He said he would have drew it if I didn't do the conditional.
Oh, okay.
Based on Catherine's recommendation.
You've got it, okay.
So I am going to, based on his acceptance, take Catherine's recommendation. How does that go?
So, language that will be prepared by the city attorney?
Yeah, that this, that the access at the city's determination may be changed or removed when the city determines the traffic warrants it and the agreement will be binding on successors and assigns, and any sort of changes will be at developers' expense, or owners, actually. I mean, it will be recorded against the property and-
Okay.
That's the gist of it.
Change your second or agree?
I accept that, yes.
Okay. Further discussion?
Could, I'd like to, to, for us to consider looking at that north entrance and study that, see what, do we have the room, do we have the right-of-way to even widen or actually include a left-turn lane there? Because that's, it's all down to one lane each way at that point, but do we have the sufficient right-of-way? You can't tell from, is that, how feasible is that? Now, would that, should that be added to this as a, as an amendment, or should we-
If you want Denny to look at it-
No, I'm not going to make it binding in this motion. I think we should add it as a future agenda item. All right, that's good.
Okay, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved.
Thank you.
Thanks, Danny, appreciate it. Thanks, Glenn, everybody else. Finance committee, item A, discussion of possible action on the application for a retail Class B fermented malt beverage and reserve retail Class B liquor licenses from River Valley Hospitality Center LLC, doing business as River Valley Hospitality Center.
I'll move to approve. Second.
Okay, motion and second to approve?
Subject to the contingency stated by finance, which was reserving the description of the licensed premises and building and so forth inspections. We can look at the issue.
Is it about standing? Fire inspections?
Yeah.
Whatever, whatever we did in finance, right, Randy?
Yep. I have a concern.
Yes.
That, is that we're reserving a license now for October, which is an extension of our normal procedures, is that reality? Is the building going to be ready? I, I don't know how many projects we've had go on here that have not met their first extension, so it's, are we just snapping it up because it's here and it's our last one, or is it going to be ready?
Mr. Rhodey is still here, so.
Well, the question is, how, how solid is October? And if someone else comes up in the meantime, looking for a license that we don't have and this one's sitting there, I don't, I'm not happy with that.
We have one or two others right now that are in a similar status besides this one.
Sure. Well, obviously-
Doug, identify yourself again, please.
Doug Rhodey, L.L.A. Hospitality. It's a, there's potentially several stages to it, so, you know, getting the event center, it's, it's actually in pretty good shape, the kitchen's gutted. We, the biggest issue that we have right now is we're in the process of selecting a general contractor, laying out the plans for the hotel. We have to make sure that, again, there's access, that you can actually get to the facility in order to open it. And so, part of that process right now is, as fast as we can possibly run, is to get all those things together and we, you know, from, from the standpoint of it's, it's the end of June, I don't know if I could commit to October right now. It, it may be November, but we're certainly, you know, any development that you have, you have certain holding costs. Well, as soon as you're able to put that asset in use, that, that's the best business equation to use. So, it is our intention, if, if there was a potential way to, to get it open before October, that'd be great, but at the same time, you know, you don't want to rush into it. So it's staged, you know, there's, there's catering events there, we're looking at a restaurant concept that we're pretty close on, so, we'll see. So I can tell you, it's not our intention to sit on a liquor license by any means, and, you know, this obviously is a, is a great city to be in that business, and I'd like to be in it as soon as I possibly can. Thank you.
Okay, further discussion? I'm sorry, was there, did we have a motion on this? Motion second? Okay, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Item B, discussion of possible action on awarding professional services contract for downtown parking analysis and long-term public parking strategy.
Yeah, a few weeks ago, the council authorized going out for requests for proposals, received three responses, we sent out to seven different consulting firms specialized in parking, in parking analysis. The best proposal that we received was from Rich and Associates out of Southfield, Michigan. Their proposal was for thirty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars plus travel expenses. They have, we were concerned about the amount of travel expenses that they'd have would push it over the forty thousand dollar budget that we have. They've agreed for the maximum not to exceed contract of forty thousand dollars. Second best proposal submitted was from Carl Walker Consultants. They were at thirty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars, including expenses of about twenty-five hundred dollars. And the third was the Walker Parking Consultants, a proposal of twenty-six thousand, sixty dollars in expenses, however, they really didn't address the request for proposals criteria that we put out. We were a little disappointed in the response simply because they were the most local consultant that had made a proposal, and we were hoping to see something much better from them, but we did not. So we're recommending approval of the professional service agreement to Rich and Associates for not to exceed forty thousand dollars. Again, if it gets approved tonight, I would call them tomorrow, ask them to send a contract which Kathy would review and then move ahead. If, for some reason, something would, would happen, I would respectfully request that we could award the contract to Carl Walker, who was the second best proposal.
So you want both those pieces included?
I, I would like to, otherwise we're coming back and we're losing time, and time's precious trying to get this analysis started this summer.
You have a motion?
I'll move to approve based on those recommendations.
Okay.
Second.
They're moved and seconded, further discussion?
Danny, what's the timeframe for completing the study?
Well, we want to do three audits, one this summer, one fall, and then one during the seasonal shopping period. Hopefully have a final report towards the end of January two thousand and seventeen, maybe the possibility of early February. We want, you know, we want them, and there will be a, a public process in this that, that this group will, will conduct, so it's, it's, we want to, rather than try to rush through it, we want to do a good job, we want a thorough analysis, we want to, you know, review quality recommendations, and then hopefully not only, you know, how do we provide additional parking, you know, how do we communicate what parking, where parking's at, and also look at the general management of, of the parking in downtown Hudson from a city management standpoint. So there's, there's more than just finding parking spots that's being done.
That's good, because I'd hate to see us spend the money and still not have the direction come out of that.
That's why we want the best proposal, best response, because we think they will address the issues the best for the city of Hudson.
Okay, cool. I like it. And so we got the motion second, all those in favor? Oh. I thought, I thought they said we did.
Yeah, we have a motion.
Yeah. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Public Safety Committee, stopper yield sign at Promenade and Promise Streets intersection?
It was requested by Alderman Alms to, as a request from a citizen up there, that the developer put up a yield sign, and so that's what the Public Safety Committee unanimously agreed upon, so that's what's in front of you.
Okay.
I'll move for approval.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
The recommendation, somehow, or, I read somewhere, that the developer look at additional streets for, for traffic control, was that a, that was in the original letter? Was that included in the?
That was part of the motion from the committee.
Yeah, what's going to happen, I visited with Alderman Alms, the police department, myself, we're going to take a comprehensive look at that neighborhood and, and come back with a recommendation on additional signage if necessary. Again, we don't want to use stop signs to control, you know, to just stop or, or slow down traffic, but, you know, we already take a serious look if yield signs are necessary or if some additional stop signs, but we'll, we'll take a look at that issue.
Okay.
Don't need a motion for that.
Next, Danny?
Cool.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Park Board, I don't see anything here. Nothing? All right. Unfinished business, discussion of possible action on ordinance nine dash sixteen, increasing the Class A beer and the Class A liquor licenses for the city of Hudson.
You had asked me to put together an ordinance for that, and I consulted with city attorney in regards to that, and this is what we've come up with.
Okay.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second to suspend the rules, roll call?
Hoggett?
Yes.
Morrisette?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Weber?
No.
Okay, motion's approved.
I'm going to move to approve the, or adopt ordinance number nine dash sixteen.
Suspend the rules, you can't.
If you have four votes.
Yeah.
Or, just as, I thought it was one.
It's the third.
Okay, never mind.
Four, no matter what.
Second.
Okay, motion second, discussion?
I, I don't feel comfortable with this anymore. I, I don't think it's a good idea to open up too many licenses due to the, the difference between Minnesota's laws on Sunday versus our laws on Sunday. We've got enough, we've had some traffic coming in for, for that, to purchase alcohol on Sundays, so I'm not in support of this ordinance.
We, I think we all received a letter from John Cromer, owner of Spirit Solar Liquors, and, and he makes some statements in here that I feel like we need to step back and evaluate. It's been proven, you know, and I don't, I have no proof, it's his statement, but I would like us to see, take a, slow down and take a little bit closer look at this. It's a huge change. It, it really is going to change the, the way that liquor is sold in, in this city. So we're moving from liquor stores, which I feel are fairly closely controlled, into entirely, into different environments where I believe the potential for having less control, having people who are not as well-trained, and we, also, we double the number of places that we have to look at and have to, have to evaluate. I guess one of the questions I would have is, what does it cost us to ensure that, that these places are adhering to the laws?
Talking about enforcement?
Right, enforcement, and what's, what's our fee for the license? Are we suddenly opening ourselves up to more expense than is justified? Or, so, couple of issues, you know, one is the enforcement, and the other is, is it, do we really want to do this? Is it really appropriate?
Chief Johnson, do you have any comments?
Well, I've been asked this question a couple of times over the last week, and, and basically my opinion is, the system we have in place now works. The simple fact is, we get six, and if we get another twenty-five hundred people, we can add an additional business. As Alderman person Hall said, on Sundays, especially in the summertime, we get busy down here. I did some quick statistics in our records, we only show fifty-one incidents at the six liquor establishments, the liquor stores of Class As over the last ten years, but that doesn't take into account the incidents that happened right after they've been at these liquor stores or coming there. One of the incidents that didn't show up in our record search was the shooting in front of the Spirit Cellar. It happened there, that's where they went to buy the alcohol, but it wasn't inside, so it didn't register there. So, we have a lot of problems with intoxicated subjects walking around town, we have a lot of problems with, especially on Sundays, with people buying their liquor and then going down to Lakefront Park and having open containers, and going up to Burke Mouse Park, urinating in the parking lots. We have continual problems. I think that by adding more of these liquor stores, all we're going to do is create more problems for ourselves. I, I agree with Jim there, I think we need to sit back, take a look at this, and decide whether or not we want to add more of these, or if we want to keep the number we got and do it the way we've been doing it for a number of years. I believe that's what our founding fathers did before this, back in the nineteen seventies when we had the age of majority going on. They wanted to make sure that we didn't have any problems with liquor establishments downtown. They didn't want to become a bar town, or they didn't want to become a liquor haven because of the age of majority going on between the two states.
Thank you.
I, I supported this, and I certainly consider we have a small monopoly of liquor stores in Hudson, that's what we have created. We've had people reply for licenses in the past, Quick Trip, which could sell to majority of travelers passing by. This particular thing came up again, I think Randy had talked briefly about it, but I don't believe that the Sunday traffic that comes over here from Minnesota, and I live downtown and I see it all the time, is going to go up to the Hampton Inn and buy wine at the counter. I think that's a convenience for the guests that exist there, so. Every other city I've lived in Wisconsin does not have quotas, you can buy liquor at a grocery store, you can buy it at a gas station, and each person tends to buy liquor at the store that is where they like to get it. Most people go to liquor stores because they sell better quality and have a greater variety. Often grocery stores don't have that. So, the reason I've supported this all the way through is that I've seen this work, and I think it works fine. Madison's a perfect example, you have great liquor stores, you have great, you can buy at a grocery store, you can buy at a convenience store, I just don't see it as a, a major issue, but, you know, Hudson is unique in the fact that Minnesota's right across the river. I think you may see people spread out and buy at different locations, but I don't think people are going to stop buying liquor and behaving the way they are just because we're going to add a couple more licenses, especially one at the Hampton Inn.
And this does not-
And this does not address, John, and I agree with what you're saying, the ordinances that we have in place to keep them separate out of grocery stores and convenience stores. That does not affect that.
No, this increases the quota.
Right, but they can't.
But it authorizes or allows more class A beer, class A liquor licenses to be issued.
Wisconsin statute says that you, um, there are no quotas, a municipal, municipality may refuse to issue licenses as long as it uses good judgment and doesn't discriminate. Well, I, I feel like we've kind of just locked it into one type of off sale, and, I don't know, I guess I've never really liked that, so I guess that's kind of why I've continued to support maybe expanding that, changing that. So, I'm not saying I'm right, I'm just saying it seems like we have an opportunity that's of somebody that applied for an off sale at a hotel, wow, what a convenient thing it is for the guests, so.
I think we have some issues with the kind of supervision that would take place in the different stores, like for example, in the grocery stores, the supervision over the sale of liquor is gonna be, and you just don't have the resources. In a liquor store, it's, it is more controlled, that's my personal opinion.
Well, I know, I've seen people stealing liquor at Spirit Cellar, they have cameras, there's so many people there on a Sunday that I'm like, wow, did you see that? You go up front, but it's, it's hard, because Sunday is a, a unique experience. I don't think you're gonna see that at the Hampton Inn, that's my point.
Hampton Inn is a different situation.
Well, they've asked us to.
Grocery stores.
Yeah, right.
Right, so, so it's, at that point, how do we, how do we start making judgments as to who can have a license and who can't? What's our, what's our basis for that?
It's difficult, I mean, I looked into, and I ran it by the Department of Revenue, because under the Wisconsin statutes, allow a municipality to adopt more restrictive regulations on liquor license premises that do not conflict with state law. Through case law, various, these ordinances are litigated, and for example, a city cannot have different closing hours for class B liquor, class B beer. So it's a great, it, it seems settled that, and I'm not saying there's a case that specifically settles it, but they seem to recognize a municipality's authority to have a lower quota than is allowed by statute. You get into equal protection problems when you start to treat different businesses within a license classification differently. So my question, for example, to the Department of Revenue was, could the city adopt an ordinance that with respect to class A licenses, beer liquor licenses issued to a hotel, for example, that it could be, only be sold to registered guests, something along those lines? They're gonna kick it up the chain a little bit, but the immediate answer was no. My opinion would be, well, it's not, it's not inconsistent, but it's gray, and so I think you can, the quota issue is less gray than starting to adopt restrictions on different types of businesses that may be eligible for a class, a certain class of license. We do have those ordinances, they haven't been litigated. I think there are public health, safety, welfare, you know, reasons for those ordinances, like use of law enforcement resource and so forth, but I, I think a quota restriction is more, is cleaner and more recognized in the law.
Mr. Cromer, I'm gonna put you on the spot. We received your letter, and obviously you're the owner of the Spirit Cellar.
Yes, I am.
So how do you respond to John's argument or position that by not expanding the quota, we're in essence protecting a monopoly?
Um, for a community this size, six licenses, I don't think is a monopoly, there's, there's six different businesses out there that are competing for that business, as you said, and another fifteen-hundred increase in population, which is gonna happen, very soon there's gonna be another store available as well. So, I guess what I've seen, I've been involved with the store for nineteen years, around Wisconsin, as communities have had this situation arise, they've, they've tried the, we're just gonna increase our quota a little bit, it always turns into some sort of lawsuit that other entities want a piece of that. It's like you can't give one to QuickTrip and not give one to the Three Freedoms and the, the three other convenience stores. So you end up opening it up, the quota of six becomes twelve, becomes twenty, and then everybody has it, which is what John is saying. I just, as I said, I've lived in this community my whole life, and I know that it will become an issue, just because we are unique, being right next to the metropolitan area. So, that was my point I wanted to bring up to the board. And if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to.
What kind of training do employees get in a liquor store, or should, or is, is anything required by state law, or?
By state law, they're required to take the, the.
Responsible beverage service.
Responsible beverage service, of course. And you bring up good points in that this is what we do, so we are gonna be more attentive to that. As John said, yes, it gets very busy on the weekends.
Crazy.
At our store, that I will have six staff, and you try to accommodate so that there's a staff person in each aisle or something, so that at least there's a presence there. But, yes, you, you almost get over, we get overwhelmed with it. So, but with that being said, as Marty said, there's, there's really been fifty-one instances out of the stores over the number of years, so I think we control it very well. I guess I mentioned in the letter, when this gets into a place like a Walmart, it is not on their agenda, this is not for the, they, they basically let the beer suppliers and liquor distributors, they, they stock the shelves, they load the shelves, and then, and then nobody else really pays attention to it. So, it, it is a little different story with, when you get into the big stores, so.
Is there an age requirement to be able to check out liquor in Wisconsin?
Eighteen years old.
Eighteen. And in some, some states I've been in, it's obviously higher than that.
Mm-hmm.
A grocery store in Arizona, you can pick up a bottle of wine, but some older person has to come over and run the checkout, so.
And I, I don't know how the other liquor stores operate, but I prefer to get the older college students, when you, when you try to hire an eighteen or a nineteen-year-old, you're tending to open yourself to, up for the, just the potential of having some underage issues happen, so it's best just to try to stick with twenty, twenty-one-years, so.
Well, John, you handled being on the spot pretty well.
Oh, thank you. Indeed. Thanks, John.
I just have a comment. Protection of existing businesses and restriction of trade is not an appropriate purpose. Use of law enforcement resources and just affect upon the community, the quota is more of a community-wide thing than restricting individual types of businesses, and the idea behind a quota is to not overload, I think, the community with a regulated substance. And that seems to be recognized in law, obviously the state has quotas on certain types of licenses.
Okay, this is gonna take four votes, any further discussion?
Yeah, when the, if this doesn't pass, which I'm sure it's going to, I'm being facetious. If the Hampton Inn applies, when the additional liquor license, are you saying it's prohibited because we do not allow anybody but liquor stores to sell? We are not allowed to discriminate according to state law, so what happens when that new license becomes available? Can't the grocery store apply for it?
Well, the, um, Hudson.
We have to get to fifteen thousand, I believe, correct, for that? I think it's one for.
So, well, my point is, one is, there's one gonna become available next, can anyone apply for that?
Uh, yes, except Hudson has additional restrictions on class A liquor licenses to be issued to grocery stores and convenience stores. It's, they've gotta be in a separate room with separate cash register and so forth. But the quota itself does not, it just addresses number of class A liquor and beer licenses.
But, and we also have to get fifteen thousand or fifteen thousand and one, depending on the wording, that, I mean, it will happen eventually, but.
At some point in time, one more will become available.
We've been adding about a hundred to two hundred a year, so it's.
What's the process once another liquor license is added? Can, so are there mul, usually multiple applicants for this?
People are required to advertise, but.
Under city ordinance, we have a publication notice of availability.
Yeah, it just goes in the paper once saying we have.
So it's first come, first served at that point?
No, it's never first come, first served, the council always has discretion considering the facts and circumstances of each case. What happens with the notice of license availability is that it won't come before, it, there's, gives a period of time, I think fifteen days maybe, for people to apply, and there have been instances.
Multiple.
When there's been three or four applications for a single license, and then the council has to make a, you know, applying the factors in the ordinance on which entity is going to best serve the city and be the best use of the license. Jobs, tax base, impact on neighborhood, those things, use of law enforcement resources.
In the past, I'm sorry, in the past, it's been with the restaurant license, bar licenses, or beer and liquor licenses, where we've had the multiple people in looking at the same license.
Yeah.
Okay, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
No.
Motion is not approved. Uh, item B, discussion of possible action on the proposed grant application for the Hudson Dog Park, including a letter of support.
We received, the Public Works Department Parks received this letter from the group that is proposing the dog park, they're looking to get some, a grant application in, and it requires a letter of support from the city, so they're asking if they could get that letter of support.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion been moved seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. New business, discussion of possible action on resolution seventeen dash sixteen, compliance maintenance annual report.
This is Kip and Joe Boudreaux are both here, if there's questions, this is the annual sewer or wastewater department report that goes in the DNR, we receive a grade every year, we're back up to getting a four-point-oh, there were a couple of years, I think we're in the three-nine-something range, but they got A's across the board on this, if there's any specific questions about the report itself or the process, Kip and Joe are here. Otherwise, we would need approval on the resolution to submit it to the DNR.
Were there any deficiencies that, that, any executive summary?
Nope.
So you said we're back to four-point-oh?
Couple, yeah, we were, I think we're at a three-nine, Joe, what, we're at three-nine-seven or three-nine?
Three, four.
Yeah, there was one thing that we had, one, one affluent, or some type of overage at one, one month, but this year there were no issues at all with it.
I'll move to suspend the rule. Second.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules, and second, roll call?
Morse?
Yes.
Hoggett?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
And McCormick?
Yes.
Okay, rules are suspended.
Move to adopt, resolution seventeen dash sixteen.
Second.
All right, motion, a second, further discussion?
I guess just commendation to the Wastewater Department again this year, I mean, for them, since I've been here fifteen years, I think all but one or two years, we've had, they used to do a different scoring system, but we've had the top score every year, so hats off to them.
Okay, thank you, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Uh, item B, application for rezoning twenty-one acres southeast quadrant of State Highway thirty-five and Hanley Road from B two, General Business District and R one, one-family residential district to L one, light industrial district, and amend city of Hudson comprehensive plan from general commercial to industrial, Northern State's Power Company, set public hearing date for Monday, August first, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixteen.
I didn't type it.
Six fifty-five, and refer plan to commission and city staff.
Yes, that was me.
Sorry. Danny?
Yeah, this is the parcel that Northern State's Power, AKA XL Energy, recently purchased, they're requesting a zoning amendment, requesting set the public hearing for Monday, August first, six fifty-five P.M., and then refer the matter to the plant commission in common and the city staff for recommendation.
So moved.
Okay. For a second? Moving second, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item C, discussion of possible action on pursuing discussions integrating St. Croix EMS and Hudson Hospital Health Partners.
I'll speak to that. Here's what happened, we, the hospital, their health partners, talked about contributing, was the word, initially, something to EMS, and so we set up a meeting between Brandon and Josh Olson, myself, and the CFO and Jackie, who's the chief of nursing, or, I'm sorry, I don't recall right now. We had two meetings, and it was clear that at least what I thought would be some form of financial contribution was not what they had in mind. So at the second meeting, they submitted the St. Croix EMS proposal that you received today. And in essence, they wanted to, a kind of a three-stage approach, moving toward a possible integration of St. Croix EMS with Hudson Hospital and Health Partners, and eventually leading to the city being out of, the city and its partners being out of the ambulance business. So there's a couple of issues with it, one is, the timeframe that they're looking at is two years, and we have this Ward Avenue building that we were proposing to remodel for EMS, and of course, it would make absolutely no sense to spend the money remodeling a building that's gonna have very limited use. Another problem issue is the financial condition of EMS, and it's not unique to this ambulance service, all EMS services are having the same issue, which is increasing costs and declining revenues, and the reason being that the mix of insurance versus Medicare and Medicaid is changing unfavorably, because Medicare and Medicaid only reimburse up to a certain point, and, you know, you can bill as much as you want, but you're only gonna get paid a certain amount. So, that, as that percentage increases, the revenue mix is unfavorable for EMS. But on the other hand, we've got capital outlays that are increasing as well as labor costs, so we're in kind of a crunch, that will take some studying to determine how we can best adapt to it. And Brenda prepared the projection of revenues and expenditures that you all received, and it's a conservative basis, and Brenda, maybe if you wanted to address some of these, but we wanted to get with some idea five years from now, what it's gonna, financially, what it's gonna look like. And this was before this proposal came from the hospital and clinic. And these are what Brenda projected based on current revenues and expenditures, and I believe you used a three percent.
I, yep, I used a three percent rate increase per year, but as we know, Medicare and Medicaid are only gonna pay what Medicare and Medicaid pay, so we would get about the same revenues on those sides, it would be getting more out of the insurances from that. We've got a current collection rate of forty-five point seven percent, and I. We've got a current collection rate of forty-five point seven percent, and I use that, so I budget conservatively. Budget revenues flat. Expenditures, I'm budgeting conservatively also at two point seven-seven. If we would look at the fifteen budget versus the fifteen actual, we would've saw a loss there also. So I'm not alarmed with the trend, but it was something to bring up to council because of the discussions with the hospital and the Ward Avenue building.
So the, the important numbers, well, there's a couple of them, but as you can see, the operating income loss is, is currently about a hundred and eighty-six thousand projected for this year, and that would go up to a half a million in twenty-twenty-one. And part of the reason, a significant part, is because of the capital replacement program that we're gonna try to implement. And that was EMS vehicle equipment replacement plan that you have there. Right now, we, we have three ambulances, one of which is old, needs to be replaced. And it's gonna cost a hundred and ninety to two hundred thousand to replace it. And so it's another issue is if the service is gonna be integrated and go away from the city. How do we accommodate that expenditure for a limited time that the city's gonna get the use of it? And we, the mayor and I met with the CFO and Jackie today, and we had some questions concerning, you know, what would be the concrete steps that Health Partners would take if we agreed to start walking down this road? And we really didn't get much feedback. We got mostly, well, we don't know, we'll have to get back to you. And in my view, those aren't satisfactory responses at this stage, because if we're making a commitment that is gonna benefit Health Partners significantly, because they will control the ambulance service, and right now, they get a huge benefit from it, because we transport patients from Hudson, the Health Partners facility, to Regions, and we make little or no money on those transfers, but they really, I understand that the patient benefits, but so does the hospital, 'cause they're shifting them from one Health Partners facility to another Health Partners facility. So that was, that was one of the items. The other is staffing. What do we do with the current staff that we have? And I think they have satisfactory responses for most of them, but not for all of them, and they need to, that needs to be explored a little bit more. And then a big issue, at least I think it's for me, is, is this integration gonna increase the rates for Hudson residents? And they couldn't answer that question. The way they work it, every EMS is losing money, but in Health Partners, they can make it up by shifting money from other departments. And that's what they would do in this case as well. The ultimate goal would be that EMS would be located at the hospital up here, and then it would be staffed at a higher full-time level than we currently have. We have mostly part-timers. And one of the reasons that we could not move south of ninety-four is because everybody works north of ninety-four. If they're more than four minutes away from the ambulance, then they have to stay for a longer period, which increases the labor cost. That would not be an issue for Health Partners, because they would go to more full-time staffing. So the people that would be, ambulance crews that would be there would be working in the ER, doing other things, whereas here, obviously, they just are, it's downtime until they have a run. So the other, I guess the benefit, if there is one, to the city taxpayers, is that they wouldn't be paying, wouldn't be paying taxes to support this system in the future. I think that the service would probably be the same or better, because the hospital is not a bad place to have an ambulance service for response time to Troy and Hudson. Maybe a little bit worse for North Hudson, and, but the township, I think, would be the same. So the bottom line is that I, I don't think that we should vote on doing this today. I think that we need some answers to questions, and I would wanna put this on the agenda for the July fifth meeting. We have a meeting on July fifth, don't we?
Correct, that Tuesday, correct.
And then maybe have more answers, because this is a lot of information I'm throwing at you right now.
One other note, too, is that this assumes a static per capita from the municipalities as well.
Absolutely.
Not saying that we're gonna increase that, but we...
Yeah, it, that's...
And the municipalities aren't real, obviously, the other ones especially, aren't necessarily interested in increasing that per capita, but just wanted to mention that this assumes there's no additional contribution as far as the long-term revenues. I think the last increase was three or four years ago. But just wanna make you aware of that, though.
And the per capita's twenty-five, twenty-five?
Thirteen fifty.
Thirteen fifty, okay, household is, yeah, okay.
And what they used to do several years ago, when I first came, is there was a per capita, and so much of it went to capital, and so much of it went to operations, but over time, the operations have kind of, you know, taken all of it. And so, I mean, that's kind of why we're, why we're at where we're at with the capital, is just that they haven't had the funds to, you know, maintain that capital balance.
I have a couple of questions. I hope you're on the fifth, which is okay, but are there other places that they've done this, that they were able to share with us?
Well, you, we asked that question today, and he couldn't recall any. I thought that Stillwater had been that way, but it wasn't.
Okay.
Lakeview has been incorporated into their system for quite a while. So they didn't, they didn't, you know, that's the other issue, is have you done this before, and how did it go? So that's an unanswered question.
Well, you know, I always have this conversation with a lot of people, but EMS isn't actually, it's not a profit center. You wanna lose the least amount of money as you want, but when I pick up the phone and call nine-one-one, I want the emergency to come. And just like police and fire, these are large expenditures that are just part of the taxes that we pay. I'd see it as an opportunity, so I guess I'd be curious to learn more. I think the other question I had is, you know, I don't think we'll, it's probably more of a statement, but I doubt that us controlling the rates will, that'll probably go away, right? We will no longer be, will we get preferred treatment on rates? I doubt it, but that's okay.
No.
If it, if it goes over, everything goes over, you know? We, you want, the municipality, the residents won't have, you know, Tom or whoever representing them on the board anymore, whatever, Health Partner, correct? Am I right on that?
Well, yeah, what they said is, we would like to have some citizen involvement, which means that there'd be a group of people that can say what they want, but Health Partners is gonna own it. So they control it.
Certainly interesting, yeah.
So that, that connect, potential connection between the citizens and someone on the board that runs the service will be gone, other than whatever they decide to do with, like you said, a citizen input or whatever.
I guess one of my questions would be, why do they wanna do this? Why would they wanna pick up something that's gonna cost them another hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars a year that they're gonna have to take out of somewhere else in their operation?
Well, because they see a benefit in their operation to having it this way. And I don't have access to their financial information, but, you know, I, I'm pretty sure that it's not just out of the goodness of their hearts. I think that they have a motive that makes sense to them, a financial motive, to have an ambulance service that is staffing Hudson for maybe reasons that are good for their business.
Yeah. I think, and, and you touched on it, is, what's the service going to be? Do, will they have plans to expand this to include larger areas? Would we lose service as a result of that? And what, what is their intention?
Well, they, you know, Lakeland controls St. Joseph and, you know, part of, so they get that from Stillwater. And south is, Alina has the connection with Ellsworth, I think.
River Falls. River Falls.
Yeah, River Falls. So it's not, I don't think the area's gonna increase, um...
Okay.
...necessarily.
Tom, is this a fairly new proposal? Or we've been, is this...
Brand new.
This is brand new?
Yeah, this is new.
So we didn't buy a property we didn't need?
No, we just thought, this came at the last EMS meeting.
Yeah, it just, this just came up within the last couple of weeks.
So they would take over everything, the dive services, all those?
Yeah, the idea would be there'd be kind of a two-year phase in, and there's questions about how you can have a public and private partnership that, I don't know the answer to that.
You know, another discussion that Brenda and I have been having is, I, well, we don't know this, but I can't imagine we would sell them our equipment. You know, that's something that would have to be discussed, too, with the ambulances and all the equipment. Are they anticipating we're just gonna hand it over?
No, no.
Well, I mean, and that's just, we were wondering about that, too.
No, I think that the idea would be that they would pay the fair market value for that, for the equipment. The other issue in this interim time would be, the city could potentially benefit from having purchases through their supply chain, and it would probably be less than what we pay 'cause of their, their large number of purchases they make. So that's of some benefit. I don't know. Rich, any other thoughts?
No, I, again, I think that everything was very vague today, and so the answers were to the questions were something we would need to talk about.
Let me rephrase, rephrase my question, and that was, what happens to the rescue services? Now, didn't we just transfer some of that over to the fire department?
The fire, yes.
Yeah, that's different.
So would we be transferring more of that there, or would it, you know?
No.
I wouldn't see them picking up the ropes and, and the dive.
That's fire and rescue, that, yeah.
So that might change, then. We might pick up more of that.
If there's anything that EMS is currently doing, he's saying, for rescue.
Right.
If we were gonna, that would probably transfer over to, or potentially transfer over to fire.
I thought we actually did transfer most of the rescue back to fire, so I guess I, is that true?
We'd have to, I mean, that's another thing to discuss.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't think, like, the dive team, you know, if you've got the dive team, you got the rescue, you, you, which is the, and then you've got the ropes and, you know.
I thought the dive team was part of rescue, that's why. Maybe I'm confused.
Don't know.
Okay.
That's another issue you bring up, Jim. I mean, just mentioning the fire department is, this has a ripple effect, because the fire department, if we had moved EMS to Ward Avenue, was gonna occupy the EMS spot. So if we go down this road, we're not gonna be moving to Ward Avenue. So fire department's not gonna be moving to EMS. So that's another thing, it's a wrinkle to take into account, among many.
Keep asking questions, I guess, huh?
So I would suggest that we not vote on going down this road tonight, and let's look at it July fifth, and maybe we'll have more answers, and perhaps you'll have some questions in the interim.
Interesting.
I'd certainly support we continue to investigate it, because it would be nice to have something that was, remove the deficit that's coming at us, but... All right. We don't wanna lose the services. I consider it valuable. Well, critical.
I sure want that to be available if I need it.
It's a, it's a real...
And you know, the, another issue that's gonna come up is the new ambulance. I mean, it's, it's needed, and be thinking about when that comes up for a vote here in, soon, whether the city is gonna wanna commit, you know? I mean, we're, it's money. And the idea, Brenda, is be about two hundred thousand?
Yep, and the recommendation that's in this cash flow is to purchase half of it with cash and then do a three-year loan for the rest of it.
From the city.
From the city, correct.
Can you lease those? Can you lease an ambulance? You can?
I think you probably can, but, you know, you, you wanna have it, they come with a big part, and I was having a lift that's motorized to move the patient up, and that costs quite a bit of money. And we'd want an ambulance that has that. I'm not sure you can get those in a lease, and I'm not sure what the rates are for a lease even.
That'd be good to know.
We, we can look into that. And things that aren't in our analysis, too, that could help, help the stability of the funds are increasing the billable runs, so as run volume goes up, but staffing and fixed charges stay the same, that would help revenue in the funds, and then doing, you know, just looking at the supply purchasing and if there's ways to do efficiencies there.
It almost seems like we could do, rather than being completely sold out to Health Partners, we could do an exclusive contract of service for a limited period of time upfront, maybe two or three years, to see if it even works, and allowing us the option to back out if we don't like it, still do the Ward Avenue thing, and seems like that might be an interesting alternate to the current proposal. So, I don't know. Because the money would still be coming from them, and then we would be acting on their behalf, but we're not completely, you know, sucked into the whole process either. So something to consider.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions?
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks.
All right, item fifteen, I do want to acknowledge and recognize the passing of Kitty Rhodes, our former state assemblywoman, as well as the department, current Department of Health Services Secretary. So it's a very unfortunate passing. She has served our community very well. It's my understanding that the wake is Wednesday, the funeral is Thursday, and I don't have the exact information where those are, but please check into that and keep her family in your thoughts and prayers. Communication items for future agendas?
My commenter, so from here on out, when people ask us if there are any off-sale liquor licenses, we basically say there may be, well, there will be one in the future, but we're not gonna address quotas, it sounds like, for a long time. Okay.
Anything else, Tom?
Just the EMS thing.
EMS, okay. What was the, you had something, Jim, didn't you? What?
Oh, looking at the north entrance into the...
Yes, right.
Holiday.
And I'll, I'll get that, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Catherine?
No.
Any other staff?
We're, everybody else, I know, John said he's gone. Everybody else is good with Tuesday, July fifth? Just wanna make sure everybody, okay. And they weren't getting to the Friday before and finding a way to have a forum, so, okay.
John, you're not gonna be here?
Not on the fifth, no.
Okay, can you get your comments to me about EMS?
Sure, yeah, I'll send them to EMS, yep.
And if you have any financial-type questions, I'll, Brenda and I'll shoot you.
Yeah.
Or scenarios or whatever.
Okay. All right, motion?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Second, we adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.